We'll call our meeting to order, seeing so many people in the audience, I wanted to be sure to welcome everybody and really extend a warm welcome as our school year begins. Our students will be walking through those doors tomorrow. Dr. Wall sent two very, very kind emails, one with his address to the community and one to say huge thank you to the fire department for helping out at all of our elementary schools.
And I give kudos to Courtney Taylor for crafting those messages and welcome as Community Relations Liaison, glad to have you aboard. You bet.
Wonderful, and with that we'll go to roll call. It's Mr. Secretary.
Madam President, all are present except for Ms. Niles.
Thank you, and with Pledge of Allegiance, why don't we turn to Mike?
My pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, my people, my liberty, and justice for all.
Make it a motion to approve consent.
Second?
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we move to our workshop topic, we have one this evening, our legislative priorities, and Mrs. Hackett is going to lead us in that discussion.
And I'm bringing it up here, so basically it's that time of year again where we prepare for our discussions with our legislators. We've started several years ago now in the Carmel Clay School District, the Carmel Clay School Board, to formulate what our legislative priorities are, to kind of give us talking points when we talk to legislators and other leaders, and we found to be very effective. Last year, the ISBA had started emphasizing the legislative initiative.
Can you bring your mic up this way?
Up here, okay. ISBA started last year to emphasize legislative priorities that way and kind of try to promote a whole statewide conversation of power in numbers. So what I did is I provided you with, oh, I think, four different documents, we'll have them up here, we'll briefly just go through the first two, that'll just kind of lead up to our conversation, which will basically be around what ISBA has proposed to be their legislative priorities this year, and we can, our goal is to formulate what ours is going to be, or at least enough of a information that I can put a draft out there, we can tweak through emails and have something to pass at the end of September, or to adopt at the end of September. So with that, what I wanted to give you is the legislative priorities that Carmel had two years ago, because that was the last long session or the budget setting biennium session. As you can see, we emphasized one goal that was all funding, second goal was local decision-making, the third was about high-performing school districts, which last year, that legislation, which last year we decided that that was a good time to hand it over to administrators to look at how they can utilize that and be creative in their own school, so we kind of pulled back last year from that being a priority. And then four, five, and six are very specifics that were addressed 100%, so those aren't even needed anymore. That's just a very brief overview. Last year, again, we emphasized funding because everything seems to always come down to funding. As we go through and discuss ISBA's proposed legislation for this year, we'll hit on some of these, and basically they kind of fall in three categories. Either during, next in my conversations last year, there really is no legislative interest in the angle we are trying to take, or it is a continued need, but the conversation has kind of changed, or ISBA has included something in it, so that's kind of how the funding areas go. Student testing, ISBA's proposal really only has it in the foundational statements, so that might be something we discuss in a little bit more depth, because we seem to really want to emphasize how our legislature looks at testing. And then third, our two transportation issues, both of which are continued on through ISBA's proposals. And that brings us up to this year already, our time travel. And I'm going to skip down, I'm going to skip the foundational statements and do that second, let's go on down to the very last one, that's the ISBA proposed legislative priorities. What ISBA did was a couple things this year. Last year, they used a lot of phrases, this year they used more sentences, which I think helps explain things more, and actually it's along the lines how we thought when we made ours last year. They also, under the discussion, give talking points. One thing we did last year is we had one sheet without the talking points, so that was an easy one-sheet handoff to our legislators, and then another one with the talking points, so that we can always be on the same page, so that might be something we consider too. They highlighted in yellow anything that's new for this year, and they remained unhighlighted in yellow if it's a continuation, even if the word changed from last year, so that'll help us. Also, I just want you to remind everybody that Pam, who was not able to be here tonight, sent all of us some of her preliminary thoughts, so I have them right here, and I'll try to keep them in mind, but if we can all kind of do that too and make sure her thoughts are in our conversation, I'd appreciate that help, I guess. So let's go through these one by one, kind of get any thoughts out there, and then after we go through each of them, then let's kind of turn our conversation over to how we want to pull together for our own personal Carmel Clay legislative priorities. That's kind of how we did it last year, and that seemed to work well. So ISBA is first proposing that, within mind that six years ago, a $2 million and a $10 million threshold was set before something, before a capital project or construction project would trigger a petition, a remonstrance, or referendum. And they're proposing, because that was six years ago, that those limits, it's time to raise those or consider raising those. And Roger, I thought maybe you could talk on this a little bit, how this might affect Carmel in projects that, possible project that you might foresee, or where finances have gone in the past six years, as far as this being a priority for us.
Well, as stated in the write-up, while inflation has been lower than what has traditionally been, there has been some inflation in the last six years, and these amounts have not increased. They were, by my opinion at least, they were low to begin with, and so I think consideration to increase those, perhaps even beyond what inflation might have been, is worth consideration. One of the things that happens is if, we have that now with the bond issues that we've recently proposed, because the one project was over 2 million, then it does provide for potential referendum on those, if there's a remonstrance against them. And so the public already has opportunity to voice their opinions, we have hearings that they can address the school board and so forth. And so I think it would be in the interest of the public to allow more, this is another example, a local elected school board's having more local decision-making ability, and at the same time, again, there is current opportunity for input from the public.
Okay, thank you, that gives a great background on all that. Does anybody else have any other thoughts to add?
I mean, I guess the process is, I just want to be, we're going to go through these, and then we'll develop ours, and we can decide if this makes it, or where we're going to place it in.
Yeah, that's kind of how I see it, if we can just go through each one, and then, after we have them all in our head, which one makes a priority for Carmel? And along that line, how much do we keep in line with their format, with ISBA's format, and how much do we branch off into our own format? Excuse me, last year we kind of did a combination of merging the two. Okay, I'll go on to the second one there, which is also a new one you can see. This is in line with, it was either last year or the year before, our legislature passed along an opportunity that if someone gives a donation to a private school, they get a tax donation, and that way, it's someone's choice, if that's where they choose to put their money, the state can enhance that opportunity by giving the tax credit, yeah. But that same opportunity is not available to public schools, so what this proposes is that one system is treated as equal and fairly as the next system. So if I wanted to give a tax credit, or a donation to Carmel Clay Schools, that I would get a tax credit, just as if I were going to give it to a private entity. Personally, I think fair is fair, and that makes total sense. Any other thoughts on that?
Would this be similar to, I mean, if they make a donation to Carmel Clay Educational Foundation, is that a tax deductible, right? And I guess my question would be for Roger, is like, do we accept donations at this time? Do we get them? Okay. Well then.
We just don't get tax credit, where I think we might run into like question or concern, all the money that they take out in our taxes for the referendum, that's all going to the public schools, so how do they differentiate? Or do they differentiate, and that will be something we'll need to think about for the tax credit. Does that make sense?
No, say it a little further.
On my taxes?
Yeah.
I'm already giving many hundreds of dollars towards the referendum.
True.
And I'm not getting a tax credit on that money.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
This would be over and above, so how they differentiate, I'm not sure how that would...
Yeah, I don't think that affects that at all, because I think the whole referendum puts it in a whole different system.
Wow.
But it's still to a public school. So that's, I think this is tricky. I would love this to be the case, but I think it's tricky. And also, Indiana State permits us with donating money to public schools, at least our public universities, we get a very, very big bonus tax credit, up to $1,000 off your taxes on what you owe Indiana State taxes.
Well, I guess my question is, and I guess I'm not prepared, is what tax credit are they talking about? Because I'm, you know, everybody gets a don, you make a charitable donation, you get a charitable deduction.
Right.
Which is different than a tax credit. And I'm familiar with, like you said, if you make a donation to a public, Indiana school, then you get a tax credit on your Indiana tax return.
And is that what they're talking about here? I'm thinking it is.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to find where that program exists, and maybe it's, we just need clarification from ISBA, what they're looking at, you know, what they're talking about, because is it, exactly, if you make a, if you made a donation to the Carmel Clay Foundation, would you also, besides getting your charitable deduction, get a tax credit, which is a dollar per dollar reduction in your taxes, as opposed to above the line for, and you have to itemize?
That's like 20%.
Right.
So 20% of what you donate, you get back.
So, I mean, we just need to research what ISBA...
First step there is for me to, and I should say that these weren't even sent out yet, I contacted Brian Smith and said, where are we on this process, and if so, could you give me what you've got so far, because we're going to start our conversation. So last year, since it being the first year that ISBA went on this approach, there was actually grassroots meeting in the middle of the summer, so we could banter back and forth, but there's been no discussion, and it will actually, and I was going to bring this up later on, it will be voted on by the delegates at the...
Is it Monday morning, the 24th?
Fourth, or something like that.
Six?
26th, yeah.
Okay.
And we have a meeting that night.
And that's what happened last year, too.
And that's what happened last year. And once they get to this level, they really don't change, or the odds of them changing are low, so we can kind of set that in our mind, so I would, that's what my suggestion would be, is we, there won't be any time to really discuss it in depth, except for me contacting Brian, which is not a problem at all, so. So I will check into that one for...
So I guess our basic question, the tax credit, are they, is this the tax credit that we are currently permitted to get from donating to Indiana public universities?
Okay.
I just Googled.
Yes.
And I think, if I'm reading this right, I don't know, I didn't find the law yet, Michael, but it's a tax credit for donations to scholarships at private schools, and it writes, it says it's a 50% credit, if you give 1,000, you get $500 back, courtesy of the state treasury. So it would be very similar, I would think, to when we have donations to our CCF for scholarships. So if that's, if that's the take on it, I mean, I think it should be fair, regardless of whether it's private or public, but it should be fair to both, but I think we need to get, I agree, we need to find out more stuff.
I can easily check into that. Anything else on that one? Okeydoke. We'll go down to 3A and 3B together here, center that up there. These are basically taken from last year. The first one being the protection from the tax levy that hits the transportation funding more than anything else. Other transportation funds in other districts are hit worse than Carmel, although from what I understand, we're feeling that pull more and more. This rose to the level of priority for us last year. They did pass a waiver, but they've not made this permanent yet, so the effort here is to make that permanent. Any thoughts on that?
I like the waiver. And I would say continue to support that.
The waiver, and even a permanent fix. Anything else? 3B, same thing we had, we looked into last year, we prioritized. This doesn't fit, doesn't affect Carmel today, but the way the law is written is, public schools must provide transportation to private schools, but they talk about a safe drop, a safe drop-off point, but they've not defined safe drop-off point. And so the argument goes that, that when something, this is all fine and good until something bad happens, and then that definition is safe, and you don't mean to be the one that has that lawsuit, so that's where that comes in, and we prioritized that last year because of safety for children. Any further thoughts on that one?
Think it's a good one.
Okay. And that moves us down to, and those are just in line from last year, so that's pretty straightforward. To the topic of referendums, this does hit us. Four, last year, the ISBA proposed, and we adopted as basically one of our priorities, is truthful language and balloting. And progress was made last year for operational referendums, but not for capital referendums. Progress was made last year for operational referendums under certain circumstances, not totally, but there was progress being made. So this is proposing that the progress that was made for operational, get that truthful ballot language into the capital projects referendum. Excuse me, thoughts on that? Maybe Roger, maybe you'd have some thoughts first.
Well, I like what they did last year, I thought it was a good start by saying that if you have a referendum and you're maintaining the same tax rate, that you can put on the ballot that you're renewing the referendum, and that you're not increasing the tax rate. The deficiency, I think, in that is that you're, the language as it's now written for the operating referendum states that you're not raising the tax rate for that referendum. You could be raising the tax rate, the overall school tax rate by, in a debt service, for example, and that's, you're not describing that. On the other hand, you could be a district that is raising the referendum rate, but lowering the rate in the debt service fund, and the net effect may be that the taxpayer in that community would have a lower school tax rate, but the only thing you, but you can't say that, and you can't, so you're, I think you're at a disadvantage in that respect, and if the intent is to simply describe the project and the overall outcome of what the school board is asking the community to support, I don't understand why you're, again, a local decision, you're not permitted to totally describe what you're doing, as well as then the nature of the project and what it's for. The only thing, you're so limited by simply saying, we're going to raise your, we're asking you to raise your, vote to raise your tax rate, or vote to maintain the tax rate in that one fund. And so I think that language expanded to the capital fund, and possibly expanding it also with the operating referendum fund would be beneficial to the taxpayer.
That picks up on something that I thought of, too. So when we look at this a little deeper, we go back, this might be one that we actually write more than ISBA's proposing to write in there, so that we expand it to operational and capital, some progress on both ends.
Absolutely, especially with the language. I think it should be in layman's terms, what you're doing.
It's kind of a no-brainer, but...
I really do.
The total outcome of any tax, so the overall, because we will be mostly neutral. And there's no way to share that if we, with our current language, so how we see that.
It seems to me that the attempt, the assumption is they're trying to limit what a school board may do, that they're concerned that they might actually mislead the public, and I think in the limitations that they have, they're doing just the opposite, that it prohibits us from sharing the entire picture.
Agreed.
And I think they could control that in terms of what you would be permitted, as they do now, what you're permitted to, the language you're permitted, but even if they allowed that, it would show the entire school tax rate before the referendum, before the vote and after the vote, because as a taxpayer, I'm concerned, bottom line, are you asking me to raise my taxes?
Right.
Versus, are you asking me to raise, you know, one tax rate? Well, you may be acknowledging that you're lowering the others, and there's been a lot of examples of that around the state, where districts have intentionally neutralized any impact, but they're not allowed to say so. And in fact, it seems to me that it discourages that then, because it's like, what's the point? And if you're going to raise it, you might as well try to raise it a lot, because it doesn't seem to make any difference in terms of the language in the report.
Right.
It actually presents more accountability to what you're really doing, if you listen to what Roger says, because you could, you could mislead, and the net result would be a much higher overall rate.
So really, it comes down to, how can we help, how can we, how can we help our voters know exactly what they're voting for? Just as we want our students to know exactly what they're trying to learn.
I was looking for the impact of what taxes and what net result.
Okay, got that down. Number five here is a new one, and some of you recall, we were at a meeting, oh, gosh, I can't remember exactly when, and this kind of came up, and in conversations that Nick and I have with legislators. When the legislature decided that it's okay to have operational referendums, or any kind of referendum, well, here an operational referendum, the seven years, you do it for seven years, and that ended up being just a political compromise, no logic to it whatsoever. Then, one of those unintended consequences, once people started, or districts started having referendums, they realized, well, when they're up for renewal, there is no election that year. So your only options are to have a special election, to ask for it early, to skip a year and ask for it late, or one thing, suggesting we had last year in ISBA, through ISBA, was a mail-in ballot option, that really wasn't supported by the legislators, that didn't really go anywhere. So if you recall this one meeting, that suddenly became, especially by Kathy Richardson, like, wait a second, these special elections are going to cause me a lot of grief, we need to fix this. And no one, it was kind of late in the game to fix it last year, I think, is what they thought, but this is the proposal this year. So if we play this out for Carmel, we would be due to ask for a referendum next spring, if we so choose to do that. That's still under the seven-year law, because it wouldn't get through, it wouldn't get through the legislative process by the time we'd be asking that.
Needing.
Right. And then probably, at that point, it's effective July 1st anyway, so that's even if it gets through. But we would then pass it for another seven years, which then puts us back in a cycle, so the next one would be on an election year, and who knows in seven years what's going on politically, so that at least gets us to the next seven years. This then, wouldn't necessarily be an immediate concern for us, it would be a long-term goal that I think would make sense for our district and other districts, get that on that cycle. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I like the idea that they're putting it, or at least attempting to put it into a general election cycle. I also like that they're adding ballot, adding language with regards to advertising and using school facilities, because that, what, five years ago was removed, and so that really leaves a challenge, especially meeting space. So I do like that that is included.
And again, unfortunately, we wouldn't benefit from that.
Right.
This time around, but, yeah, it sounds like a lot of support for that one. Another, actually, just makes common sense. Number six they have here, this is one we had last year, asking to make permanent the ability to pay general fund utilities and some of our insurance through our capital projects fund. This has been somewhat of a process for a while, but there's a hesitance to make it permanent, and again, this goes to local decision-making. We had that as a priority last year, and this is really just falling straight in line with that.
Mm-hmm.
So any further thoughts?
One half.
365 days later. Mike?
Well, but last year, they extended it for two years, is that, am I skipping ahead? Yeah, I think your report, last year, they extended it to January 1st of 18, but didn't make it permanent.
I do believe you're right, yeah. Which is very similar to the other one, where they just, they'll extend it, but not...
Tresha, how many times has that been extended, or was this the first extension? I feel like it had been extended a couple times.
You know what, I have to, I couldn't tell you for sure, because there's two different ones that keep being extended.
Yeah, I think this is at least the second time.
Okay.
I'm almost certain that it was more than once.
And I don't know if part of that was, I mean, I think initially, the extension was to help get through recession times and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
We're not bouncing forward, we're through recession at least, but we're not, that's just my gut feeling, is they don't feel the urgency that they used to, but they can't come up with a good reason why not to make it permanent.
What came in in 2001, as is noted here, when the state added sufficient funds, so they quote, "allowed" school districts to, beginning in 2001 through 2005, to allow them to increase the tax, what otherwise is the maximum tax rate in the CPF. So for Carmel, that's about a 4% of our tax rate, and so something that was previously funded by the state. This is an example where the state, when they didn't have enough money, they pushed it down and gave you the authority to add this tax, and then you were criticized for raising taxes, and later that's when the capital, the circuit breaker came in. So at least, I would think they should make it a permanent part, since they've started compromising that in 2001, if not allow it to increase, along, again, along with inflation, because it's been capped since 2005. And we know that utilities in particular have not, rate increases have not been kept.
True. You bring up a good point, so that would actually falls under kind of a unfunded mandate, which was another area that was important to Pam, that we include in different ways. Nick and I would talk about that last year, and it would seem to always take the state legislators by surprise, like, well, what unfunded mandates? And they wanted specific examples, and so Nick and I started coming up with talking points with some specific examples. We found that most of the examples actually were at the federal level, but there are these ones that often aren't like whole programs that are passed unfunded, but just, as you point out, Roger, sneaky ways to just kind of pull that money back.
And for Carmel, this is a little over $2.5 million.
Any other thoughts on that one? Number six. Number six. Number seven, this was also proposed by the, by ISBA last year, that redevelopment commission representatives, one has to be a school board representative or resident of the school board, but they don't have voting rights. So their thought was to have that school board representative have a voting right. We opted in our discussion last year, we thought it was important, but not necessarily important locally, because we benefit from what the redevelopment commission does and other ways, we have a good relationship at this point. But I thought maybe, Mike, you can talk a little bit to this, since you're on the redevelopment commission, you're our representative.
Sure, I mean, I think I feel similar, in terms of at least this one, that I don't know that we necessarily need a vote, but we had, I believe, discussions last year, and I believe ISBA had last year, a requirement that a percentage of TIF goes to the school district, and to me, that would be a, I would rather see that on our legislative priorities than forcing them to give us a vote on, a vote on the commission. So that would be, you know, in terms of, for what Carmel's priorities are, where I would say is, is more important, because, you know, we do have representation, they do listen to us if we've got points, and I don't know that a vote is as important. And I've had some discussions about trying to get a percentage of TIF to go to the school district, and that's still an ongoing discussion, but I think it also needs to be had at a higher level than just Carmel, because, you know, I think Carmel is probably way ahead of most other cities and counties in the state in terms of redevelopment commissions, and they're, you know, they're leading the way in that, so, and if Roger, Dr. Wall has anything more specific.
I think you summarized it very accurately.
Can I ask, Mike, what, you said that sometimes that conversation goes on, as far as a percentage of the TIF going to the, our school district, what, what kind of support do you find there, locally?
Well, I mean, I think locally, they don't, from the redevelopment commission's perspective, they want to use the money, the TIF money for redevelopment, and not for schools. And from our perspective, we're losing that taxing source for a period of time, recognizing that overall growth in Carmel increases the assessed value, which helps us at the end of the day. So I would not recommend that we want to, you know, change the law to ask for a large percentage, but just for that period where the TIF is out there, that, to recognize that there are consequences that affect the school district's funding from properties coming off the tax rolls for that period of time that they fund the redevelopment goals.
Any other thoughts on number seven there? Okay, and that brings us to the last legislative priority that ISBA proposed, and that has to do with collective bargaining. We looked at this extensively last year. Last year, ISBA proposed two different priorities that had to do with bargaining. This one, we looked into, to allow MOUs anytime during the, the school year, not necessarily to the bargaining window. And we did adopt it as a legislative priority, and then, if you recall, Nick and I, in our conversations, got not positive feedback from our legislators, and in fact, some, I guess, warning from some unintended consequences that have happened and that could happen. So we talked about that and pulled back. I was actually surprised to see this, again, through ISBA, because I had not heard, yeah, had heard that this was even back up there.
We're perplexed by that. Don't really see the need for that.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on that? I don't, I don't think much has changed in our thoughts on, on that one. Okay, I'm going to quickly go flip back up, don't make anybody dizzy, to the foundational statements. So ISBA, before last year, had foundational statements about three to five pages long, and no one read them. And last year, they made a huge effort to consolidate, to really get down to what are the statements of what we believe, and to not kind of go on a soapbox. And again, the ongoing ones are in regular writing, and new ones are highlighted. Whoops, I don't want to. A couple I want to point out, because it's things we hit on, adequate, equitable funding of public schools, that is obviously a priority of ours, and we always include it in our legislative School board authority speaks to our emphasis on local decision-making, and how that really benefits the kids the best. That, and that was something that Pam brought up that was very important to her. Down here to school, calendar, and instruction time. That was two years ago, when we listed our support of flexibility and local decision-making, that was one of the examples, and so it's listed here too. Staff development programs is listed as here, and that actually falls really under one of those unfunded mandates, that if you want your teachers well-trained, and you want your teachers to be able to put the best forward for the students, then put your money where your mouth is and provide funding for that, instead of having us pull it from elsewhere. So I think that hits that square as far as an example. And then student assessment, this also kind of surprised me. Right now, if you recall, the Indiana Student Assessment is being examined by a 23-member panel. They'll come up with recommendations by December 1st to the legislature, who will then decide what we're going to go forward with, instead of our I-Step of the past. I'm glad they had on the foundational statements here, but it, I'm not sure why it didn't make their legislative priority sheet.
That was my question.
We've always tended to emphasize that. Just as they say here, the focus on the benchmark more than the, I liked actually how they said the shorter end-of-year testing or the summative testing. To meet federal mandate, we have to have a summative test. We've looked as a board, Nick has, in conversations, different areas, looked at different options, and we cannot get around that. We've even all looked into, can you fold in the formative? That's become a hard thing. But if you can make your summative test there to meet your federal requirements, but as short as possible, so you get the information you need, and then move your instructional time on, that seems to be important. One thing Pam did bring up, she's concerned on the amount of time, the amount of, the amount of this percentage that goes to the teacher evaluation. So anyway, I want to throw that out there. As far as student assessment, if that's something that we would want to pull back over to our legislative priorities, and write something up about, along the lines of the language they have here, but maybe also the teacher evaluation percentage.
I thought of number two from last year. Yeah. With reauthorization of NCOB and ESSA, with the autonomy that the states are going to have to interpret formative and the summative, assess student assessment piece, I would strongly recommend this maintain a priority for us. It's a significant opportunity to be a part of the solution for this, with I-Step going away, so I think it's really important.
And that's, that's what I wanted to bring up. So this committee just gives recommendations, doesn't have to be taken, and often, sometimes isn't. That's all during the time when we're having these conversations with, with our legislators. So any effect we can have on their ability to think through some of these recommendations, maybe, on how it really affects kids in the district, I think would be important.
As of a couple, excuse me, as of a couple weeks ago, there, on both polar ends of the continuum on this, was reported.
Which?
The committee.
So maybe we don't even get the direction from that committee, unfortunately, and maybe it is kind of a hands-up to conversations of how people like us can take that conversation.
We'd love to be at the table to be part of the solution with that.
Okay, so with that in mind, we've really gone through it all, and I can only pull up so much, I know everybody up here has their sheets of paper, but I can only pull up so much up on the, on the screen. At this point, I'd like to pull together somehow ISBA's priorities and kind of ours from last year, if we have to pull in any from two years ago.
Tricia, I just want to speak to kind of our guiding principles. As I look through ISBA, most everything they have listed all go back to finances, and they're really financial priorities, which I know in turn support our students, but is there, are there any others in addition to the student assessments that we really feel like are important to include, that are more student-centered, that would benefit our kiddos?
Well, let me use that as a segue, because I was thinking that I'd like to have some big-picture priorities as, I mean, I guess, first of all, I think it's important that we keep it at one page, not including our talking points. I think, two, we need to remember who these are, who we're aiming these for, and what the purpose is. So I would, I mean, I like the way we had it laid out with kind of main subjects, but I would propose, and I don't know if it's first or last, kind of some bigger goals, and I'll just throw out a couple, and we could talk about them. I mean, one is, we want to encourage teacher proficiency, so I think we want the legislature to make recruiting and paying teachers' salaries a more realistic thing, knowing that we're not going to get that solved in one legislative session, but that that's something that's important to us as a district, and I think, as Leila said, if we put students first, then the reason that we're asking for that is to have students, we want the best teachers, we want to be able to recruit the best teachers, we want to be able to pay the best teachers what they're worth. Another potential biggie, big one out there would be mandatory kindergarten, and funding for preschool. And those aren't things that we're going to get this session, but those are things that we're opening the door, opening the conversation with our legislators, and including, and even including something that, yes, we are a referendum state, and that's fine, if you want us to be a referendum state, then you need to, you know, help us with the referendums. So, and then I think the easiest thing from there is, let's go through our, ours last year, and say, keep it, get rid of it, and then what we want to add, and what we want to take off, and it'll be, you know, like you said at the beginning, a work in process, because we do have time to, to get this ironed out.
I like your idea about the foundational statements, and we can easily begin with, you know, kind of an intro that we are student-centered, or, you know, take it from even our guiding principles, yeah. That's right here in front of me, it's right in front of my face, is even an intro sentence, so that's nice. And I would even say, I've been reading a lot lately on kindergarten, preschool, and really, a lot of the literature points to even before that. So how do you, how do you get educational knowledge, you know, the day a child's born or before? I mean, even before they're three. A lot of, a lot of ability is set and a lot of success.
Videos.
Not videos. But you know, that first-step approach, that parent is the first teacher approach. So I think we're still actually in the beginning parts of that kind of conversation, and even if the legislatures are clear on the options that are even out there.
Well, and the challenge then comes in funding. I hate to say it, but, you know, the discussion on preschool that I've been involved with in the last six months is, where's it coming from? Because we have one bucket for education, public schools, vouchers, and, what's my other term?
Charter.
Charter. I mean, there's just one bucket, so. Valued statement, but how do we fund these things? But I think they're good foundational statements.
Mike, could you repeat your first priority? Because I was taking notes as you were saying that, and I know I don't have it in its full content.
I mean, I don't know that it was a, I haven't written it out, but it was, it was some, it was along the line, and again, it goes to the funding. We're not adequately funded to be able to pay our teachers what we want to pay our teachers. And we're not going to, we, Carmel Clay Schools are not going to solve the whole, the teachers are not valued in our society equal to where some of us may think they should be valued and compensated. And I guess the other thing that I didn't say before is, we also, between now and the legislative session, may potentially have a change of administration in, or change of party in the governor's chair, and we may have a new, what's Glenda Ritz's?
Superintendent.
Superintendent of public schools. So, you know, we can obviously adjust ours as that goes, and we see who's there, not that I expect a major shift in the political climate in our state house, but we're in this for the long term, not the short term. So I just think we, we need to have some bigger ones out there, and I, and one of them, which is the legislative foundational statements about, we're opposing any expansion of vouchers or tax credits for private school. I mean, I think we need to come out and say that, point blank. And then, and again, I'm not really sure what our role is. I mean, if we really want and have a specific area that concerns us, then we need to, we can take the next step of even drafting a legislative bill that says, this is what we want, whatever this new section to say on referendums, and draft our own, because that, if we've got something to hand to whoever it is, to say, look, here's, you know, here's actually what we want, does this make sense to you? And take as much of the work off their plate and put the work on our plate to, to get it done.
I'd, I'd agree with that, because when we've met with them, they are looking for suggestions. So I think as clear as we can be on the referendum statement, the foundation statements, I think the better off we are, because I really believe they're paying attention. They may not pay, you know, we may not see it every year, but I think cumulative over time, we have a chance to make a difference here. I agree with that.
And Pam's not here, but Pam's pointed us to Alec, and all the things that they do, and that's exactly what they do, is, here's the statute that you guys should pass, and there's no reason that we can't do that. And again, our job is to take care of the students and do that, so this is just something on the side, but, you know, we need to, but it's something that we as a board can do.
And I can talk to Brian Smith, because that's part of what he did last year, actually, is to get specific bill language and do the footwork it takes to get someone to carry that. So specifically on that, on the referendum one, there's actually two of them, last year at this time, when I asked him, he was at the beginning part of the process of all that, but I don't know now, I didn't ask that this year, I just asked for, what do you have to send forth to start our conversation? So that's a good question.
Actually, it's like, one, four, and five are all doing the same thing.
Right, but there's, there's not a reason that we can't draft what we would like the statute to say, that if you're passing a referendum, this is the language that, and Roger's even talked about it, this is what your current tax rate is, this is what it will be the proposed. What makes it complicated is- What makes it complicated is that's going to affect a number of different places in the code and tying them all together is what's going to take time. Because I'm, I, you know, I believe that operating referendums are under one section, capital referendums are on another section. So, but we, you know, we can work on that and I'm sure.
I think you bring up a really good point and I know in the past, we've worked with David Day, the High Performance School District. He helped create the language and move that forward with us, as well as last year, the last long session with all those mandates that were, now that was unfortunately, yes, it was a little watered down, but he did put together a, you know, his team, a pretty comprehensive, you know, language of what we had, what we would like. So I think, especially along the lines of the referendum and maybe some of the others, I think it's a really good idea just to go in and say, here, we have it ready. Work with this.
I want to commend Mike. I agree with Mike's comments wholeheartedly. And as I look over the ISBA, I mean, it really too, the big thing here besides funding, which affects so many aspects of education, is also local control. I mean, we have to make sure that we get in there and get the local control because there's another bill being proposed again, I heard, for the school calendar, for the unseen time, you know, it comes up every year. We should be able to control our testing, our assessment. It should be based on our students, not somebody else's.
So Mike suggested we start with our last year's legislative priorities as our starting point here. And I think that's a good idea because we found it was actually a great outline for our conversations. And I think our board had a lot of betting last year as far as how to group things, language to use and things like that. So let's kind of go through these. One A was really an emphasis on if your referendum would, would not be renewed, can you have some time to phase it out? I'll tell you, there was no legislative interest in that whatsoever. They really haven't as a whole accepted that we're a referendum state yet. So there's no, I would rather emphasize helping us be transparent and open in the question and our use of facilities than others.
More visas instead of any.
Yeah, so I would, yeah. And then B, as far as accurate language, well, all that ISBA put forward is their number four says capital referendums allow truthful ballot language. If you allow me, maybe I can take, I wrote down some of your comments and, and just expand on that a little bit. So it asks to enhance the progress that was made last year on operational and then maybe some specifics on that. So I'll expand on that one. Our one, our one C, mail-in ballot as corporation, I think that's really being hit now with the request for the move from a seven year to an eight year. That fixes that if we, if we switch over.
Well, and I guess my question on that is, I mean, would a mail ballot even be more expensive for us? I know last year we talked about, we just wanted to have more options, but I, I mean, I agree. To me, I would take that one off.
The mail-in option wasn't as expensive as the special, holding a special election. It still was a fair amount of money. There didn't seem to be a lot of movement on that. Both of those ideas came from, through ISBA, I suppose, but I think our time would be better spent by supporting the move to an eight year for our future.
And I guess while you're talking about eight year, I mean, does it, is there any feeling, why not even ask for more than eight? I mean, we may not get anywhere on it, but if we ask for 10 and they say eight, then we've won. And in reality, I mean, I understand from the legislatures' priority, they don't want this to be a forever funding source. But however much it costs us each time we have to do it, if we can kick it out two more years, or even two more years beyond that, we're spending money on students and, and again, I know at this point, the law has changed and we're not supposed to be spending school district money to pass it, but we are spending time and somebody else is out there spending money. So, you know, I'd say even raise it from eight to 10 or 12.
See, I'd agree with that because they're not willing to say we are a referendum state. In a referendum state, you pass a referendum, it stays there until another vote to take it off. It is on there. So they're fighting that by saying, no, we're not really a referendum state. This is a, kind of a gap filling measure. So they're not taking that plunge because it was voted on, until it's voted off, it stays on and states that are referendum states. So this is kind of a, you know, kinda we're a referendum state, but we're really not. So I agree with Mike, more, more years the better because it, I mean, it's better on taxpayers, to be frank. Better for the schools.
Does that give us the flexibility that, so say midway through like six or seven years in, we realize that we're going to need more? Do we then go for another referendum?
I guess you can, I mean.
If that, I mean, if something would, unforeseen would come up.
But I think that you can't have more than one referendum at a time now.
Correct.
They nipped that out after the last one. Because we had one existing in 2010 that was just finishing up, if I remember right.
Right.
And they said you can't do that. So we'd have to, we'd have to let the, if you do that, the current referendum would have to go away, under the current state law.
Well, what I might do, let me go home and think about this. What I might do is try to mirror ISBA language as much as possible, but then also include in there, you know, eight year minimum. And then the conversation, for a million reasons, it's better for the taxpayers, you're using your time towards your students instead of towards campaigning.
I think if you put down eight, regardless of if you put minimum or not, they will see eight and go with eight.
That's a good point, but here's, I guess I don't know the right answer because if ISBA has moved it from seven to eight, one district throws in 10, another district throws in whatever, I don't know the right answer. I don't know what helps the message and what doesn't.
You've been to these meetings. How, how many districts are doing what we are doing, these grassroots meetings, to really unpack our concerns with our legislators?
I would say there are, I'd say before last year, there was probably about three or four in the whole state that had these conversations.
Oh, I agree.
And I would say, starting last year, I don't know for sure, I would say more. I think they're very, I think they're more at the level that we probably were maybe five or six years ago where we'd have meetings, but it didn't have the systematicness that we have now.
So perhaps a difference in years won't make as much of an impact as it would if everybody was lobbying for eight and we said 10.
Could we contact Brian and see if ISBA has given any consideration to upping the years?
And if, if there's any pushback, if you say 10 or 12 or whatever we say.
It doesn't matter.
It's still up to the voters. So for legislators to contest this, say, it's still a voter decision, you're putting it in the hands of the voter. We're just saying not as frequently because it's, you know, it wastes a lot of time and political capital doing these more frequently. But they can't, wouldn't be able to argue with the fact that the voters are making the decision. Enhance more local control.
But Tricia, I think your question was more, we want to, we want to speak with one voice for a lot of people. And I, I agree with that. I mean, I, and I applaud ISBA for, you know, coming up with priorities and doing it. But I also think that we're more nimble than they are and we're going to be able to adjust as we move forward, once they pass whatever they pass. And I agree with Kathy that we should try and get ours in front of them beforehand. But again, and just like we did before, these are Carmocle's legislative priorities aligned with ISBA's. And I don't want to do anything to the detriment of what ISBA is trying to do. But I do want to, I do want to be able to develop the relationships that you guys developed last year and build on those and it helps, it'll help them as well.
Well, and I do think that the main, I think that we have a visual in front of the tons, everybody that we send it out to. You know, we don't know who reads it and who doesn't. But when we have the conversations, it's all a conversation. So we would then, you know, whether it's 10, 12, 14, really the conversation is, how do you best use the money? And then who takes that conversation forward? Who actually brings it up in conversation when all this is being discussed? So it sounds like there's, for our local ones, you know, support for 10. Go for 10 to begin with, with the conversation of, why does it even have to be 10? Why isn't it just on there until the voters say, we don't want this anymore?
And if we want to have something that actually connects to something, because seven connected to nothing, it wasn't five and it wasn't 10, you could, you could substantiate 12 because that's, you know, the life of a student in our schools is 13 years. You could connect 12 to something. Your parents voting, the parents voting for functionally the life of their child being in Carmocle schools. I mean, it actually connects to something. You know what I mean? 13 would be exact, but that's not going to work for election. 12 is actually something you could say, you know what, they're voting for their kid being at school. And there's actually some logic to that.
Okay. 12 sounds really good right here. That's a way to jump from eight to 12. Okay, let's see where we're here. One D was continue the ability to, flexibility between funds. Again, the legislature likes specifics. Number six that ISBA put forward is to make the permanent, the ability to pay those items from the capital projects fund would be a flexibility.
Yeah, and that's what they had last year and we changed it.
Um, no, we put, we put them both actually in there. So, I mean, what are your thoughts on keeping that? It's a general statement unless we make it a specific.
No, I saw your, I think your point is to get rid of D and leave F.
I would suggest that.
Yes.
And then that's the kind of thing that Nick and I bring up in our conversation. The bigger issue is, here's a specific, but the bigger issue is, you know, allow some flexibility here. Each district's different, each year's different. I would rather emphasize specifics, actually, again, on the general statement. We don't want unfunded mandates. There were specifics of professional development. There was, what else was there? Hold on a minute here.
Mandatory kindergarten and preschool.
I mean, I don't know, do we want to get into mandatory kindergarten and preschool or do we want to, yeah, on the foundational statements, is the, is the professional development?
I think if you do, you do have to stress that there's got to be funding associated with these. Otherwise, it's just going to take away from everything else we're doing. I agree with the principle on the foundational statement, but without funding, it's going to hurt us.
I'm, personally, I'm a little hesitant to throw that in there.
Yeah.
I would like to stay within our professional development. We know, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a given and that's something we can control. And, I mean, we have received a grant here and there, but overall, we've been funding that and it would be nice to have that, a little more support. And I think we do need to visit the mandatory kindergarten pre-K, maybe in conversation, but not necessarily under the funding priority.
Well, maybe that is something that we look at, and a different way to have a discussion on that or.
Well, we were talking about these foundational statements, perhaps that if funding is our big category, we have to, we make a general statement that just says that currently programs that will benefit all students are not funded by the state, therefore they're un, like professional development. They're always talking about all-day kindergarten for all students and things, but funding is a primary thing. And then we have our list of, here's what we need to do. I agree, I don't think, I don't think we should bring that stuff as a general goal, but just maybe a general statement.
Tricia, were there others that you were able to identify last fall, or even, you know, as recent as this past spring, unfunded mandates that are state-driven and not federal-driven, federally driven?
Um.
Or Nick, if you have any.
I think of what we, what we brought up last year. Amy, you'd like, you're about to say something.
I was just going to say, the professional development is a requirement of our school improvement plans and we've not received any professional development grants from the state. I think since the second year, it's been a mandate. So it's been years since we've received any funds from professional development funding.
Hope I can read this when I get home. I can tell you from my work on the data reporting committee, a lot of the data that needs to be reported is federally mandated. It doesn't, that how you carry it out, I mean, there's no funding that goes along, it's just mandated. But there's other things from the state and that's one thing that the committee is working on and we're just, we kind of hit the low hanging fruit, although we thought it was low and the legislature didn't necessarily think it was so low. But, but what we're trying to hit on now is outside agencies, but also how can we redevelop a whole system so that it doesn't take as much time and money to do? So unfortunately, it's kind of one of those areas where it's, it's kind of fuzzy on how, it's not like, here's the program and this is how much it costs.
I was just trying to find food for thought.
Yeah.
Is there anything else in E that we would want to include in, in the language? So if we don't have anything specific besides professional development, which is a chunk of change, I'm okay keeping it there.
Well, and I would say testing falls underneath there oftentimes because the amount of time and money it takes to test, besides the, first of all, there's the cost of the test that comes out of that bucket that Nick's talking about, that one big bucket. But then there's the cost during our day and, and the pay of the professional to organize the process and, you know, all that kind of stuff. That's actually was one of our main talking points last year is, this testing is out of control in a lot of different angles. But if anyone comes up with another one that we can hit specifically, that's what we need. We need those specifics because they were also, I think our legislators were very conscious of not passing a whole program that had no funding attached. But they weren't cognizant of the costs that are associated with some of the stuff that they do pass. You know, when it carries out day-to-day, real life. Student testing, it sounds like what everyone was saying, we want to keep that as a standalone.
And just that teacher evaluation, does that cost money? Has the, the teacher evaluation system that the state demands, has that placed a financial, they're also, just because of we have to have so many people to do it?
Would you call it a financial, I mean, I mean, time is a financial burden. I mean, it's, it's a resource. That's why we want to look at a system that's more formative for that process too.
Yeah, it's not been more staff, but it's a matter, but our staff has certainly spent Yeah, it's not been more staff, but it's a matter, but our staff is certainly spending a larger percentage of their time on that process, whereas before, they might have spent that time directly in support of students.
Right, because when you have administrators and department chairs spending a significant amount of their time on that, that's taxing away from what we would say is productive asset our kids. Yes, this is, we think it's a very high priority for us. Student assessment.
So there's that number two. Then the two transportation, let me go back down here. These two transportation ones from last year, are we interested in keeping both of those?
I would say yes. Because really what they're doing here with this whole protected levy is they, they're solving a problem that's that's not been a problem. I mean, so that's where the issue starts, but and the waiver helps, but the problem with any waiver is that there's always a line, so that at the moment, it's 10%. And so Carmel's about 9% now. So it's one of those where in some ways, you, if you get above the 10%, you end up better off than somebody that's at 9%. Because you have the waiver now. So this is another example where, you know, this type of language is being written to make it better than it is, not really, it's not solve the problem, but it just alleviates it. At least for those that qualify.
That's good information to know. So let's look over on the ISBA proposed legislative...
Oh wait, so going back, so, I mean, I agree with Roger that we want to leave 3A. The question for whether we think 3B is important enough to be on our one-page sheet or not?
I think that's a good question.
Between the two, I'd pick A over B, but...
And I think that's a good point. We want to be able to go in with our song sheet. They walk away tangible. And if that's not one of our priorities, not that it's not a priority for some, we want them to know what we think is really, this is our top sheet, right here. Because as we know, and we have their attention, if this would be two pages, it would be, they'd just kind of like, okay. I think they'd kind of brush us off. But if we can be really lasered in on what we think is going to be benefiting our kids and other kids, then we have a better shot at getting something done. So I think that's a good point.
Do we have any students at all that are affected by that? Right now, by that safe drop-off, do we, are we in that kind of system here? And it seems to be more of a rural district.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's not much of an issue. And A's not much of an issue for us either, because we don't qualify in the first place. A district like Westfield, for example, they, without that, they would have, they'd lose 90% of their transportation fund. So if you're in a district that's in that situation, a waiver is extremely important. For us, we don't qualify it for, in the first place, so whether there's a waiver or not doesn't impact us. So if you're, again, if you're picking, you know, the top three or four that are Carmel's priorities, neither one of those would make the list.
Well, but, so would it be more beneficial that we get, that we make up something that is, as we are just starting now to get hit with taxpayers that hit the cap, that we, that we, that we put something together that restores that? I mean, obviously, the intent of the cap was at that time, because the assessment system was found unconstitutional, and people's taxes that hadn't been increased for a number of years were being increased. And now we're getting to the point where our finances are affected by the cap, and maybe the goal is relieve schools, districts from the cap. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, not that I want to say, don't uncap the fire, don't uncap the roads, don't uncap everything, but, you know, again, these are our priorities and what's best for the students. So those funds that are affected, which would be transportation and capital, and the concrete example would be this year, we're losing whatever it is, a million dollars from the cap, that if, you know, that's local money, let that money stay local.
Well, they didn't say so, but, I mean, as we know, the circuit breaker language is a part of the state constitution. And recognizing that schools are by far the majority portion of your tax rate, the likelihood that they're going to be successful, essentially, we'd have to change the constitution. So I think there's something to say for priorities that maybe have some chance of being successful.
Quite well taken, thank you.
Quite honestly. I wish it were otherwise, but I don't think that's going to make one of...
Would, would we want to put something in about the TIF that Michael mentioned earlier?
Well, that's something we could do.
Roger, what potential is there, TIF-wise? I don't even know how much is in the TIF fund, that if we wanted, or if the legislature said we were entitled to a percentage, what would that look like?
I see that as kind of the starving bone syndrome, or starving dog syndrome, you know, we're so strapped for money that we're looking, including the TIF angle, where can we get more money? And so it's certainly tempting, because it's, would be more money. But the fact is, that's there as an economic development tool. So, which is what, you know, that's kind of the city's responsibility. We certainly play a part in that as far as, you know, the economic engine for the district. I don't mean that, but when we're talking about a distressed area in the community and so forth. So whether we have a vote, or whether we, whether we get some of the money, for us, it's money, but it's, the whole concept of it, in the first place, was economic development. So it kind of gets us, I think, in the economic development business. And if the city were to want to get in the school business, and some cities do, in some, you know, in some states and so forth, but in Indiana, at least, that's not been the case. So I think the bigger question is, is do you, do you want to step outside of education and really kind of be particularly involved in economic development?
Let me put it this way, so looking this over, and wanting to keep this to one page, and focusing our talking points and our priorities. Right now, if we keep on last year's legislative priorities, one, B, C would change to the eight-year. E would emphasize the professional development. And to make permanent the property and casualty insurance for the Capital Projects Fund. We have a separate one with student testing, stop right there. Other ones that we looked to support over here was the first one. Raise the, let me get it up here. Yeah, raise the threshold amounts. More, number four, more truthful language in referendums and expand that language. And that, that was about it. That's it. With 12, sorry. Yeah. That's pretty much a full page, so is that where we're kind of focused? That would put zero, none of the transportations, a lot of funding, which it is a long session. We can even pull out the referendum ones, because that's huge to us.
Laser focus on those.
Pardon me, Kathy?
Well, I was just thinking, too, as I looked at last year's, the way it's typed on the page, we have a lot of one-line ones, and if we take some of the language from ISBA, they'll become a little bit longer, so it'll fill the page. I'm sure it will fill the page, yeah.
I think we can, too. And it keeps it very laser-focused.
Yeah. Okay, I think I know exactly where we stand. Did I just pull it together as everyone else sees it, or I'll throw out a draft in the next week or so?
Why don't you do that, and then we'll have, I mean, we can have a discussion. We can have a discussion at our next board meeting. We don't have to, you know, take action on it, we can just have a discussion.
That's a great idea.
And then you'll be able to come back to us probably with additional information from ISBA after talking to Brian Smith, and we might have some additional comments or concerns to add.
And the ISBA conference is September 26th.
Right.
So there's still plenty of time that we could say, here's our drafts, and use them as little or as much as you'd like.
Well, and I've done that in the past, and their committee that's, from what I understand, their committee that's meets, has met. And so I don't think they meet anymore to discuss until the delegate passes it. That's why I think nothing really changes. So there you go.
Well, but they might like our idea of 12 instead of seven or eight.
True.
So that's something that, you know...
Because this hasn't been shared with anyone really, but you ended up with a draft, so there might be...
Right, and this will stay proposed until, but it didn't change last time. So that's what I don't understand, is I think Brian sent out a, and you might have all gotten it, I know Pam probably got it, she's not in town, but just remind us that every board needs a delegate, and that meeting will be the 26. Okay, and so last year, what they did is they did that, and about a week later, they sent out all this information. So I just happened to get it, you know, what, two weeks in advance when I asked for it to prepare for tonight. So, and then, no real changes can be made unless I, when it's put up, and then I propose, well, I need to write up, they want to advance, write an up proposal. And I actually think that 12-year one is actually worth a thought to put in there. So that's kind of how the process works. Nobody suggested anything last year. But nobody talks about, or very few talk about as much as us. That's okay. Okay, and you gave me some great direction, and then as far as who we send it out to, I just assumed we would do very similar to what we did last year, which was very similar to the year before. Our local representatives and those on education, key education committee positions. I'm not sure how much Governor Pence will be looking at things. There's Lieutenant Governor Eric Holcomb, and although he's a little busy right now, too. And then, actually, the Department of Ed, Glenda Ritz did meet with us, but two representatives did. And we had a really good conversation, so I would suggest, and they actually said, please, we want to meet from now on every year. So I don't know if that was deployed to support them politically, or if they really want to meet with us every year. But we'll take it, so.
Thank you, Tricia.
Thanks for the direction, I really appreciate it.
That was a great discussion. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So before we get to adjournment of the meeting, does anybody have any comments, questions, anything they'd like to share?
Just excited for tomorrow. We have 16,000-plus students coming in, and teachers and administrators and bus drivers and instructional assistants are ready to go. Very excited.
And we're excited, too. Any board notes, board anything? Fantastic. Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Meeting adjourned.